Fifth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And if everyone would please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lauren, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Chairman David Leland.
Here.
Vice Chair Ross Schillingford.
Here.
Commissioner June Perrin. Commissioner Philip Markey.
Here.
Commissioner Ray Nazareth.
Here.
Adam Miller, alternate one. And Gary Speck, alternate two.
And can I get a motion for approval of last month's January 28th meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion. We approve last month's meetings.
Second in.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Eddie?
Sure, Mr. Chair. These, we're going to go ahead and swear everybody in, so if you have any, if you're speaking, going to speak on any of the items on tonight's agenda, if you could please rise and raise your right hand for me. And hold on, let's get the guys outside, so we don't have to do this twice.
Right.
Sorry, we're going to swear everybody in. If you could raise your right hands for me. Thank you. Do you all swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So for tonight, we have three items on the agenda. First item is application number 19-108.
Yes. If you'll direct your attention to the monitor, the site is highlighted in blue. It's the site of a future Dunkin' Donuts. The existing Dunkin' Donuts is immediately to the south in the Waterway Plaza, and across the street is the Lakeview Center with McDonald's in it. The applicant is seeking a landscape waiver from Village Code Section 15131A berms and Section 15131B2 buffering non-residential uses adjacent to residential and/or public ownership property. The applicant is proposing a waiver to eliminate the required three-foot-high berm within the landscape buffer along the west, north, west and north property lines, and to reduce the buffer width from the required 25 feet down to a minimum of 5 feet in width along the west, north, and east property lines. The applicant is also seeking a variance, or not a variance, landscape waiver to Section 15131C1 buffering of non-residential uses adjacent to a roadway to allow a, for a 15-foot-wide buffer where a 20-foot-wide, 25-foot-wide buffer is required. Request is due to the location of a 10-foot-wide utility easement along the east property line. No reduction in landscape materials is requested. It will all be located within the reduced buffer widths. The applicant has stated in their justification statement that they were requesting the landscape waivers due to the location of easements along the west, north, and east property lines. And according to Section 15137 waivers, the village council may grant a waiver from the landscape requirements set forth in this chapter based on the following: a written statement supplied by the applicant specifying the section of the chapter for which a waiver is requested, the precise extent and duration of said waiver, and reasons substantiating the request for waiver. B, a written recommendation of the planning and zoning director and the planning and zoning commission based on evaluation of the request in view of the effect of the request on the landscape objectives of the village. C, any waiver granted by the village council shall specify the section of the chapter affected and the precise extent and duration of the waiver. And D, due public notice for public hearings on requests for landscape waivers shall be as listed in Section 2632D7 of Village Code. So, the landscape waiver is first on the agenda because the site plan, special exception and AAR that follows, is dependent on passage of the landscape waiver. So, village staff is recommending approval of all the waivers requested. The applicant has worked with staff very closely and done everything that we asked of him throughout the process, so we are recommending approval.
If I could, Mr. Chair, while the applicant comes forward, as was evidenced by swearing in the focus on tonight's agenda, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so I need to ask this commission if there are any ex parte communications with regard to application 19-108 that need to be disclosed.
No.
Thank you.
So, the applicant is present. Would you like to make any comments?
Just asking for a blessing.
You step up here, please.
My name is Manuel Landre. I'm Dejona. We're just asking for a blessing to go forward, pretty much.
Okay.
No any comments. We've gone around in circles already with Kevin, so.
Staff said you've been very helpful. Any comments from Commissioner Ross?
I do want to ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, the landscape buffer on the west side.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the lake side.
Correct.
And the north side is partially lake, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
So that, there's a 40-foot lake maintenance easement. Who owns that lake maintenance easement?
The lake maintenance easement is dedicated to the village of Royal Palm Beach.
It is dedicated to the village of Royal Palm, okay. So it's not property that they could, because what I was thinking is that would there be a possibility of reducing the 40 feet, sounds like a lot, for lake maintenance, to allow them to expand the landscape?
Right. There's actually some lake, dry lake bed that has not been dug. The extent of the lake is not the full extent, and the village may at some later date require that for storage, stormwater runoff.
Right. And then just to confirm, I think I heard you say that the landscape materials.
Are going to be the number required, yes.
Right. So if, even if the maintenance, the landscape berm or landscape easement was not reduced, the same number of landscape plantings.
The trees and the shrubs are going to be, yes, the same number.
So where are those being provided? Are they being provided on that same reduced berm or elsewhere?
No, they're being provided where they're required in the landscape buffer. There's just no, in a five-foot area, you can't do a three-foot berm with a three-to-one slope.
Okay. So it's the berm that will be eliminated?
And, and the engineering department is the one that basically requested things of the applicant, and he was happy to comply as soon as he found out what it was he needed to do. And that's part of the justification for us approving the landscape waiver is, is that, you know, he actually had more land that could be developed if not for the easement.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
And just if I may, the site is a little bit complicated by the fact that there's also a waterway tract, which is platted as waterway, so there's some land that you see when you look at the, at least the aerial view, that is not developable land, if you will, so this is the minimum, you know, request to make the landscaping work on the site.
Commissioner June?
No questions or comments right now.
Philip?
No questions for me.
Ray?
I have a quick comment. I appreciate you working with our staff, and good luck.
Thirty-five years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've neglected to ask whether there are any comments from the public. Anybody else in the room? Okay. Well, then I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion on application 19-108 as read.
Oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. You're good.
So, we got both.
He's the next one. He's the next one up.
You got one more application.
Now we get to the item number two, application number 19-002.
Yeah, and before Kevin begins with his presentation, I'll again ask if there are any ex parte communications with regard to 19-002 that need to be disclosed.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. So, you might recall the site from the previous application. It's the northernmost parcel of the Waterway Plaza. They are planning to do a new, newly, or new design Dunkin' store, approximately 3,183 square feet. It will be a drive-through. The drive-through will be oriented away from the right-of-way, as is required by Village Code. The requisite bypass lane has been provided. Actually, let me just go over that next slide. The parcel size is .92 acres, or 40,000 square feet in size, and therefore meets the minimum requirements of 40,000 square feet for the general commercial zoning district. The property has 215 feet of frontage on Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, and exceeds the minimum parcel width of 150 feet of frontage. The setbacks, the proposed building conforms to the setback standards for the general commercial zoning district. Number four, the pervious area, the proposed site provides 30.1% of the site as pervious area, which exceeds the minimum, actually, that should be 20% required by Village Code, being that it's adjacent to a waterway. Parking requirements, the applicant shows parking requirement per Village Code of 15 required spaces, 24 parking spaces have been provided. Landscape areas, the proposed landscape plan meets all of the minimum standards of Chapter 15 landscaping, with the exception of the perimeter buffer width and berm requirements, which are the subject of the previous application. Maximum building height, the applicant is proposing construction of a one-story building with a maximum height to the roof peak of 14 feet and 10 inches, which is less than the 32-foot maximum height limitation for the district. Queuing spaces, the applicant and bypass lane, the applicant is proposing a drive-through and a call-ahead pickup lane. Village Code requires a total of seven queuing spaces with at least four of those spaces occurring before the menu board. The proposed site plan meets this requirement. The call-ahead pickup lane does not have any requirements that need to be met. The proposed site plan provides the required 10-foot bypass lane, as previously stated. So this is an application for a site plan, special exception and AAR. Within the CG zoning district, a restaurant with drive-through is a special exception use due to the stacking and all that. You may have noticed that the existing Dunkin' Donuts sometimes stacks out into Royal Palm, which is not a good situation, and we're very happy that they're moving further to the north to allow a little bit more stacking with on their site before it would get to the roadway. The applicant is also seeking architectural landscape plan and sign approval for the project, and the applicant has supplied building elevation drawings, a signed package, and color and material samples for the commission's review. This is the site plan. The building is in the center of the site. There are parking spaces on the south. The main entrance is off of Royal Palm Boulevard through a right-hand turn. Once you get onto the site, it becomes one way at this location over here, and then this would be your exit, and they would go out to the main shopping center and back out to Royal Palm. The drive-through stacking spaces would occur behind some of the existing parking spaces if it gets crowded, but the menu board is at the west side of the site, and then the pickup window is on the south side. So, that meets Village Code. The landscape plan, as shown, as we stated, the buffers are a little bit smaller in some locations, but all of the material has been provided, as well as throughout the parking area and up against the building. The building elevations are shown. We have the right-side elevation, which is the north side, and the front elevation with the Dunkin' sign and the DD logo. And then, this is the rear of the building on the bottom, and, actually, hang on one second. That's the rear elevation there. And then this would be the side with the drive-through pickup window with the awning over it right here. So they'll have signage on the south and the north sides of the building. This is their regulating plan for the dumpsters, typical parking, showing the menu board, et cetera. And for special exceptions, the board is to consider if it's consistent with the standards of the village comprehensive plan, if it complies with development regulations of the Village Code, if it has, if it will have adverse impacts which can't be mitigated, if it has adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts, whether or not it has an adverse impact upon public facilities, whether or not it has an adverse impact on adjacent properties, if it's compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, if it doesn't have adverse impacts on property values in adjacent areas, and if it's not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent property. And the last one, the proposed special exception will not seriously reduce the quality or quantity of light and air available to adjacent properties, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions. The other scope of required architectural and aesthetic review is architectural and design features, landscape plans, and paint colors. The signage is shown. They're going to be using the standard Dunkin' orange and pink. You may be aware that they're in the middle of a rebranding campaign, just going by the word Dunkin' and the double D's. So that's, that's their sign package. And then on the south side, at the pickup window, they'll have the double D's as well. And that concludes our presentation. Village staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions attached to the staff report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And are you going to stay up here just to answer questions?
All yours, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Then I'll throw it back at the public. Do the public have any comments? No? Ray? Go to the commissioners.
No comment at this time.
Hello?
Nothing at this time.
June?
I just want to say thank you for enhancing the Dunkin' Donuts and moving the traffic off of Royal Palm Beach, so we have a more, you know, roundabout for them to get their coffee on a morning, because I know your coffee is so good, they're always stopping there.
Definitely be better.
Congratulations and hope everything goes well with the new building and the, and the parking.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's one of the first things I noticed, too, is the way you designed the drive-through.
Yeah.
To get those people off of the road. Because, yeah, they back up, I drive through there every morning.
Much better. We also have a bypass, which takes all those cars out of the way.
Right. Very good.
Much better.
Ross?
Yeah, I have a question about the parking spaces.
Mm-hmm.
You knew that was coming.
Yep.
So, the required minimum is 15. We're providing, the plan is providing 24 or 27.
Mm-hmm.
Significantly more than the required minimum. And I understand we don't need to provide the minimum, but is there a need for 27 or 24, is it? 24 spaces?
Yes. This is a drive-through fast-food restaurant, and were it a standalone fast-food restaurant on a single parcel, it would require much greater parking, but because it's in a shopping plaza, the Waterway Plaza, we go with a rate of one per 200 for that, and that's a significantly reduced parking requirement. So in all likelihood, the store he has open there now to the south, there are some days that those parking spaces are almost completely full.
Yeah.
So, he does have quite a few people that dine in. There's, there's people that meet there on the mornings and stuff, big groups of elderly people who are retired and things like that.
Right. Okay. Yeah, and the reason I ask is just that, you know, as you know, if we don't need more pavement.
Right.
Just making sure that we're looking at the numbers and making sure that we're not providing more pavement than we need.
Mm-hmm.
The more green we can keep in this world, the better.
Right.
That's all I have, but I love the project, and that is a Dunkin' Donuts that I frequent a lot, so I'm really glad. It's a great site. Anxious to see what was going to be there.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that it is your Dunkin' Donuts.
They were enhanced, for sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
I've read something somewhere, says something about demolition?
That's the building that's there now.
Right. Are you taking that building completely down?
Yes, sir.
What about the, there's another tenant in there, isn't there?
Well, we are going to leave.
Okay.
Everybody will be out of there. Everybody's wrong now, really.
Okay.
We'd be out of there.
It's not going anywhere till the new one's built, though.
Well, I wouldn't think, but.
How long before the new building will be completed, roughly?
It's, how long am I going to be here?
I should say, when you're going to start, you know, basically.
Well, as soon as I get to permit.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'll get started.
Okay.
Okay, well, if I've got no further questions, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve application 19-002.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. You all have a great week. Thank you.
So the last step on this will be village council, which will be next month.
Okay, and our last item for tonight is application number 19-105.
And before Kevin starts, I'll again ask the commission if there are any ex parte communications with regard to 19-105?
No.
Thank you.
If you look at your monitor, the site is highlighted in blue. It's known as the Village Center at Track 115. It's, the request is for a parking variance. As you may all be aware, there is a beautiful two-story building on the site currently that has remained vacant since the day it was constructed.
Yeah.
And two out parcels, which have also remained vacant. They were originally going to be banks, but shortly after they site planned it, that's when the bottom fell out of the housing market, and banks stopped building new, new branch facilities. So having said that, the applicant is requesting a parking variances from the village's Code of Ordinances, Section 2351, Prens 2L, in order to reduce the number of required parking spaces for the planned commercial development from 149 parking spaces down to 143 parking spaces. The request result, the request results in a requested variance of six parking spaces for the center. The applicant is seeking this variance in order to allow the entire 22,170 square-foot two-story building to be used for medical office purposes. There are currently two vacant out parcels on the site in addition to the existing office The existing two-story building was originally site planned for 50% professional office and 50% medical office use. The applicant is proposing to make available the entire building for medical office purposes. The original approval required the existing office building to provide a total of 110 parking spaces per Village Code, and the proposed conversion to all medical office use requires a total of 116 spaces. This results in the request for six space variance. Variances and appeals are allowed. The village council may, with recommendations from the planning and zoning commissions, authorize upon application such variance from off-street parking loading facility requirements that will not be contrary to the public interest, where owing to special conditions, a literal enforcement of these requirements would result in unnecessary and undue hardship. In order to authorize any variance from the off-street parking and loading facilities requirements, the village council must, must and shall find that. Special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, and which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings subject to similar requirements. They do not result from actions of the applicant, that they will not confer on the applicant any special privileges, that a literal interpretation of the code would deprive the applicant of the rights commonly enjoyed by other properties similarly situated, that it be the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land, and that the grant of the variance will be in harmony with the general intended purpose of this division, and such variance will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise be detrimental to the public welfare. Having said that, the applicant asserts that this property is unique, and that it has been vacant since the day it's received a certificate of occupancy over a decade ago. The applicant further asserts that the literal interpretation of the code would deprive the applicant reasonable use of the property, as the building has remained vacant since its completion, even though it is located on a prime corner lot at a busy intersection. Finally, the applicant contends that this is the minimum variance required to make reasonable use of the building. The village has sent out the required 300-foot notice to all residents within 300-foot radius of the subject property, notifying homeowners of the variance request, or property owners of the variance request. The village did not receive any responses either supporting or objecting to the application. In addition, the applicant sent out notices to other property owners within the planned commercial development in accordance with Village Code. And a further justification for the variance is that the code does allow you to subtract out non-leasable areas in multi-tenant buildings, such as stairways, elevator shafts, mechanical rooms, and things like that, and that was part of the justification statement that you saw in your package. Village staff is recommending denial of the application and variance order 20-02. Village staff, in this case, we generally recommend denial on variances. It's just policy. We can't really say that an applicant has met the full burden without actually kind of saying that our code, sorry, something's wrong with our code.
But I just question Kevin, the, the building has been that way since I can remember.
Mm-hmm.
And what purpose is there in removing six parking places? Was, I didn't see where that reason was given for that.
They're, they're not actually removing the six parking spaces, they're creating a need for six additional parking spaces.
So just to clarify, they're changing, with the change in use, it would require more spaces than are currently built on the site?
Right.
So there's no actual physical change to the parking lot onsite?
They may be losing, are you losing one because of the pork cut chair that you wanted to add? No. So they're not even, they wanted to add a pork cut chair at the front of the building to make it a little bit more accessible during inclement weather and things like that.
A corporate, what was that?
What's that?
What was it they wanted to add?
A pork cut chair.
Oh, a chair, okay.
Yep.
Is the applicant here? Yes? Please state your name.
I am. Good evening, Brian Terry with Insight Studio here on behalf of the property owners and applicants. Appreciate it's been a long time. I see some familiar faces. Been a little while since I've had an opportunity to present in front of you guys, and since that time, I guess there's a, I knew I couldn't plug my presentation in, so I apologize. But a lot, everything that I was going to essentially present was in the justification and the application documents we gave you. So just to simply clarify, again, basically it was approved so you could have medical offices on the bottom floor of the building, and then professional offices had to be on the second floor. We have an opportunity, I think the village has an opportunity here. There's new ownership of the building, there is a significant interest in utilizing the entire facility for medical office uses, but because of the previous approval, like was mentioned, we're essentially creating the demand for six more spaces, which are not available on the property as of right now. So, that's what the variance is requesting, is basically it's a 4% variance from the required parking across the entire thing, to allow for the entirety of the building to be utilized for medical offices. Again, I think, you know, I've driven past it ever since it was built back in 2009 as well, never had a tenant within it. Certainly, the economy had something to do with that, but since there, the economy has significantly changed over the years, and yet that has still remained vacant, the new interest, as it being fully occupied as medical offices, is what we're trying to achieve here. So, again, as Kevin had mentioned, a couple of the aspects in our application, we talked about the fact that, you know, some of the building space that was, that was in the total calculation is really not usable space for any one singular tenant, so that's been reduced out. We've really tried to minimize the request as much as we possibly could to get it down to the six parking spaces. Again, I think it's a great opportunity, I think it's a very minimal variance request. It provides for an opportunity that has been lacking for a very long time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We are not modifying the building, we're not modifying the parking lot, it will remain just as it is today, but hopefully with the lights on, so.
And what about tenants?
They're, so the new, so basically, they own a series of So basically, they own a series of practices throughout Florida, one actually here in Royal Palm Beach. The intention is for them to be able to bring the medical practice that'll occupy first the first floor, and then bring additional tenants in to fill the remainder of the building, both the remainder of the first floor and the entirety of the second floor. So we've actually got permit plans that they've prepared. They're ready to come in for... To the village to submit for their tenant improvements to begin that process. But it's all contingent essentially upon working through a variance so that they can maximize the building as medical offices.
All right. Do we have any comments from the public?
Yeah, we do.
Please.
We need to go.
Yeah, please step up.
Were you sworn in?
No, I was...
He doesn't need to be for public comment. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Albright, 5308 Lake Osborne Drive, Lake Worth.
Thank you.
Well, we own the property, the out parcel that's next to that property, so that's all shared parking. So, I mean, it said in there that we were... Everybody was sent notice, but we weren't sent notice, so we don't know. So that parking actually would be coming from us, and the other out parcel out there is where that... Those extra parks would come. Not that, you know, we don't have a tenant for ours yet either. We're looking for people, so we don't know if we're gonna need our parking or what. So it's just... It's a concern.
Thank you.
So that's our concern.
If you don't mind, I'll just make a comment towards that. So what he's indicated... So the approved plan has three buildings on it, right? Two banks, and then the office building itself. The way we've always perceived it, and the way we first, you know, introduced this variance when we came and spoke to village staff, was we don't want to touch any of the approved or rights to the parking lots that those users have. Each... The two banks together account for 33 of the parking spaces that are in there. Again, I don't think there's any concern with them maintaining the rights to those 33 parking spaces that are associated with those two bank parcels. The variance is associated much very specifically throughout everything that we've written, talking about the medical office use and the impacts directly related to that. So we're asking for the six parking space variance, which is really directly accounted to the spaces associated with our building, not taking anything away from the folks who have other properties and rights to the approvals that they have.
All right, well, then I'm gonna go to the commissioners. Ross?
Yeah, so, okay, if the adjacent, the out parcels are developed, they have approved parking spaces associated with their parcels, and they could, I presume, reserve those, mark them as, you know, whatever that business parking name is only... They cannot do that?
No, they can't. It's a planned commercial development. There's a cross-access and cross-parking agreement in place for the entire tract. But what Brian had indicated is that they didn't change anything for the out parcels. Parking calculations are still calculated for those two parcels to be banks. And if you grant the six spaces, it's for his use, they still have their 33 spaces each. Now, that's not to say that people might not park at the bank to go to the doctor, but we don't have assigned spaces in the village. There's no... We don't enforce, you know, parking for so-and-so only or the eye doctor only.
Right, but what I'm asking is, does... Would that out parcel business have the right to mark their spots? I mean, I've seen that before, you know, in parcels within the village. I can think of some right now where it says for certain businesses only.
Yeah, that's not provided for in our code.
Yeah, okay. But would that be precluded from... Would that business be precluded from doing that?
They would need a permit from either engineering or planning in the building department to put the signs in there.
But that would not be...
They're not an approved type of sign to say that this is our parking space.
I want to be sworn in real quick. Shad Vickery, 660 Las Palmas Park, Boynton Beach. I own the parcel too with a partner, Patrick. My fear is that if we take... Yeah, it is approved for two bank sites, but there's no banks ever gonna be there. Let me just wake you... You know, let's face it. They haven't been there. They're not going there. They're never going there. Banks aren't expanding. As a developer, we know this. So they're gonna be a different use, and I'm gonna be here a different day for that. But I don't want to be limited now to where that could be, that usage. We have a parcel that's 1.2 acres. On that 1.2 acres, there's 50...
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven spaces that are painted and done and developed that you can pull into. Not 33, not less, five more. So, and whoever knows what's gonna go on the other parcel too. So I just want to make this out in the open, because, you know, we're small guys in a big dog world, so, you know, it's a million-dollar piece of land we got our money into. So I just want to make that clear. Thanks.
Thank you. Did we have someone else? No? Okay. Then I go to June.
I have one more question.
All right.
So is there any opportunity to add additional spaces to the property if the parking spaces are reconfigured? Is there... Has that been looked at?
No, there's nowhere to add spaces currently.
It has been looked at from our side, and he's right. There's not locations to add spaces. And he may be correct, there's 47 parking spaces within maybe the parcel that they specifically own, but as mentioned, it's a cross-parking lot, just like the shopping center that you just talked about, where that's parked overall at one per 200. And whether you're going to Duncan Donuts or you're going to some other facility in there, you park wherever is most convenient to the location you're trying to go. So they would have every right, their tenants, or their folks who are coming to the property to visit their site, would have every right to park in the parking space right in front of the front of our building, just as one of... Somebody coming to ours could have the right to park within their 1. whatever acre property that is as well. It's a shared parking agreement. It's very, very common in a planned development. It's why you do a planned development.
It's required.
So that you can have, right, these... You can have multiple uses within a property without having to create separate tracks, separate buffers, separating everything apart. You want it to feel like one cohesive development. So again, you know, we're not reducing the number of parking spaces that are on the property. That's staying just as it is. We're looking for, again, that 4% variance that is gonna allow for the building that does exist there, the building that's been dark for almost over 10 years at this point, get activated.
Thank you.
And to address the point that the other gentleman that owns the other parcel made, they're entitled to the square footage and parking that is part of the site plan. So the limitation that he's looking at is if somebody comes in with a higher parking requirement or a bigger building, it may limit him. But that's not what he necessarily bought. He bought however many square feet of building...
Right.
And the parking spaces that are required for those, so... I mean, you know, everybody would like to build a bigger building and get more parking spaces to get a bigger tenant or more rent, so...
Well, it's just that the way that was built out, and we've been looking at it as residents for many, many years.
Mm-hmm.
It's an asphalt jungle is what it is.
Beautifully landscaped.
And you guys knew what you were buying then. I mean, you know...
We had a way to chop a cow. They were ready to buy, go there, sign up, and go, and then they chopped out, or we wouldn't have bothered.
Right.
But the design factor is what can we do from here is really the answer.
We just want to make sure that it doesn't limit our parking. If you guys give them the variance, let them get away with doing that, and they don't have to add, or it's not taking the parking from us, I mean, we don't have a concern on that, as long as it stops pinching us out of parking.
Right, well, that's what the village... That's what village staff is saying, that it's not going to affect... I mean, that's already been done. That's in the plan.
It's big, Tim.
Yeah. Right.
We just want to make sure that we're not getting pinched out of some parking, because when we do find a tenant come in there and we're maybe needing extra...
Well, as Kevin just said, that's spec'd for a certain-sized building with a certain amount of spaces. And if that was going to change at some point with you selling it to somebody, or whatever it may be, then you'd have to come back in here and then go before the council and all that stuff. So it's... You're kinda putting the cart in front of the horse here.
Well, yeah, exactly. We want to make sure that, you know, something doesn't take from us before we get on the horse.
That's not being proposed tonight.
Right. Well, we just want to make sure.
Yeah, okay. June, any comments?
Appreciate your concerns. Would be concerned also if I had a piece of land over there. I understand your concerns also, because you have an empty building that we've been looking at a long time, which we really want to get some lights on and get it moving. It is a cross-parking parking lot, which I'm sure that it will not be a problem, because we have that in other shopping centers within Royal Palm Beach. Royal Palm Beach, so I don't see any problems or anything like that. I just think we all have to move forward in a progressive way, basically. I think that's it.
Philip?
No, I'm just glad that the building was... Will have lights on, and maybe they'll get that clock working.
Oh, yes, the clock.
Ray?
That's a condition of the approval of their site plan, so if it's not working, it needs to be. They need to get it fixed.
Brian, I'm happy for you and the group moving in, but I'm not convinced yet as far as the variance, and I'm leaning more toward the staff as far as the denial, because I've checked with other medical offices, you know, from time to time, and I just don't see the... I mean, it takes a long time before you establish, and I'm not following. It's... I'm missing a point here.
Well, let's maybe just talk about the parking requirement in and of itself. And I can't... I can't really, again, I'm not here to argue the village's parking code, but I can tell you examples of at least your three closest neighbors. Palm Beach County, City West Palm Beach, and Village of Wellington.
Right.
All of their parking requirements are at one space per 200 square feet of medical office user. The difference is, the village requirement adds an additional space for every employee that we have within the building. So there's a... There is an added-on parking requirement through the village code that is really detrimental to being able to utilize the building for medical office. And so, again, if we were in any of your neighboring communities, we would meet the parking requirement. We wouldn't be standing in front of you this evening asking for a variance. So it works. The marketplace says it works. The other government codes say that one per 200 spaces work. So we don't think we're gonna create in any sense a parking deficiency on the property. It's really, unfortunately, the circumstances of how it's written, how we have to now come and stand in front of you for the variance. That being said, so again, my point is, is we're asking for the variance, but I want to ease your mind from the perspective of is this really gonna create a parking problem? As far as... And I'm not sure what you meant by it takes a long time to come to fruition. It has taken an extremely long time for this to come to fruition. I can tell you, and Kevin can probably tell you, I think I first met with them probably a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, starting the process of beginning a... Trying to start this variance process because there was interest in the building. It's always been the problem, is because when tenants come in and they recognize the fact that they can only take the bottom floor, they lose interest. When... There is a demand. There's a demand in the western area for medical office space. This is a beautiful building that's ready to go. You don't have to wait the two years plus that it may take for, you know, ground-up construction. So there's a great opportunity. It's just that has always been the problem of getting anybody fully committed to the building. With this, it'll allow for that expansion to occur. It'll allow for tenants to come in, for the doctors. It takes synergy. You have to have somebody come in, build the basis with the first office. They create energy. They create, you know, recognition that you can come on the property and go see the doctor, and then the next office opens up, and the next office, and the next office, which ultimately fills the building. I know there's some specific tenants that are in mind. I can't really speak specifically to who those are, but it's teed up. It's ready to move. But again, this has been the stumbling block, at least from my perspective for the last two years. And I know Rhett Waldman is here. He's been the broker for that building for the past couple of years, marketing it, trying to bring tenants in, and we continue to come back to this one particular issue needing to get resolved so we can get over the hump.
Other questions?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, well, if you have no other further comments, can I have a motion? Either approve or disapprove.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I think, you know, everyone... I think there is consensus that, you know, this building, having been vacant for so long, has really been a pity for the village, and it would be really good for it to be actually operating. And I think there's gonna be, as you mentioned, synergy. I think that applies also to the parcels that you guys own, where things start coming in, and, you know, hopefully that helps you even though it sounds like you're not really in jeopardy of losing your parking as such. So anyway, I'd like to make a motion to approve application number 19-105.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?